We're going to call this regular meeting of the Chavano Park City Council to order. Pete will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to be followed by the invocation. If you'd please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, you are our protector, provider, and Lord of our lives. In your infinite wisdom and love, you have created mankind in your image, capable of amazing acts of generosity, love, peace, kindness, goodness, and gentleness, each of which is so needed today. As beneficiaries of your grace, we thank you and we hearken your call to turn to you and humbly accept your benevolence, wisdom, and guidance. Father, we live in challenging times, and only in such times can we know the true metal from which we are cast. Will we snap under the temptation of personal gain, weakly fall under heavy burden, or succumb to a false ignorance? It is only when we keep our eyes on you that our faith abounds in difficult times. Father, please challenge us for times such as these. May we turn to you in our prayers so that we can overcome difficult times relying on your strength and not our own. May we turn to you in our prayers to discover what hidden answers have become revealed truths. May we turn to you in our prayers and become the men and women you have called for us to be. Father, tonight we celebrate the passing of city reins, and this year each of Maggie Kautz, Conrad Kirkendall, and Lee Powers are returning for new terms. We humbly ask that you bless our community with their good and faithful service through their terms. Father, help our nation, state, and local leaders to be the men and women called by you for the difficult tasks at hand. Please continue your umbrella protection for the first responders across our community, state, and nation. Please continue to protect the members of our community and prepare us in this moment for future challenges that may come. Finally, we call on you to share with the many public servants here this evening your patience, wisdom, and judgment on each of the items before us this evening, and may our thoughts, words, and deeds be only those that you would have us pursue. Please continue to protect, preserve, and prosper our community, state, and nation. Come in. Item number three, citizens to be heard. There are no citizens to be heard. Brings us to item number four, city council comments. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a wonderful prayer. I appreciate that. To all of you in the audience, thank goodness for a little bit of rain. My lawn needed it. The Aquifer really needs it, and I'm sure all of us are going to rejoice in the pursuit of mugginess. Thank you.
Pete.
So, May marks the third anniversary of Lisa Rosenstein's tragic death, and this happened three years ago when she was outrunning and hit by a vehicle. As we move into hopefully July or June, we'll hopefully see the completion of Northwest Military, and I think her death should be a reminder of that we always need to be diligent of the traffic and situational awareness.
Thank you, Pete. Conrad.
Good to see everyone here.
Maggie.
It's nice to see everyone here, and we forgot to thank everybody in our last meeting about all of the folks that came to Arbor Day. It was a huge success. Our employees were fabulous as usual, and it's just getting bigger and better. This is what we've all been working for all these years, is to bring our community together, and that was just great fun. And the next one is July, not the fourth, the Saturday before the fourth. That's a big one, and we're going to have some fireworks because they are against the law, but something that makes a sound.
We'll have fifteen thousand water balloons is what we'll have.
Fifteen. You, you know, can't believe it.
Yes.
So make sure you come and see it.
Well, and our special thanks to Lee for the medals that we had this year commemorating all of this season in Fiesta.
Yes.
Lee was the designer of that.
Lee was? We need to honor that. Look at that. It was dark.
Buddy.
Thank you.
Happy Bladed Mothers, the Mother's Day to everyone. Thank y'all for being so special in everyone's lives, and it's good to see everybody here. Thank you.
And again, just to reiterate what Pete was saying about Lisa, the Starr family has been instrumental in improving our trail system in Chavano Park, and we greatly appreciate their efforts in that regard and the commemoration of Lisa's name. Brings us to item number five, presentations, proclamations, and announcements. Without objection, item number 5.1 has been withdrawn to the next city council meeting. Item number 5.2, proclamation. Benjamin Benny Fernandez earned his Eagle Scout Award. Benny, congratulations. On behalf of the city of Chavano Park, I have a wonderful proclamation here. Wonderful Eagle project here in the city. Fifteen birdhouses across the municipal track. It'll be wonderful for those birds to enjoy. I'd invite you to come forward and to receive your proclamation today.
Great.
Step up here. The dais.
You can come over.
Pretty, I appreciate it. Both of my sons are Eagle Scouts. Sorry, sorry. Oh, you did journal the lights. You want to journal the lights? Yeah, do okay. Just a second.
Hang on.
I'm trying to get better pictures. Light's on. Yeah, no, no, it's gonna be awkward. There we go. Okay, let's go ahead and grip, grip, yeah. Okay. Oh, one more, one more. Thanks.
He needs another sash.
And a special commendation to Mom and Dad for all that they have done to get us to this point, and congratulations on getting your son back from Texas Tech for the summertime. Sons up, guns up. Come on, Conrad. Item 5.3, proclamation. City of Chavano Park, San Antonio Radio Club Field, Radio Field Day, June 22nd to the 23rd, 2024. John here. Oh, okay, John. Okay, great, great, great.
Gentlemen, y'all have been coming to Chavano Park for a really, really long time.
Twenty-one years. When did you two thousand and three?
That's right.
Wow.
And we appreciate y'all coming even during, y'all have y'all have not missed it in like a hundred years because y'all even came during COVID and had your session not necessarily in Chavano Park, but someplace else. But that it's been over a hundred years that y'all have been doing your field day. We appreciate that. You reach out across the world with your radios and we appreciate the fact that you're Chavano Park. Where was the farthest that y'all were able to communicate with on field day this year?
This past one, I think it was Australia.
Yeah, Australia.
Japan, Australia.
Halfway around the world.
And we really appreciate the hospitality. We actually have such a.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Y'all have been very good neighbors in Chavano Park. You thank me. Come on, come on up, come on up, and you can shake my hand and have me. Come on, here we go.
Thank you very much. And also, on a campus personally, Mayor, we're coming out to the event almost every year.
Oh, I am, I am.
And really, everyone's invited. Can you see the way we set things out and do things? And considering we literally just put this equipment together and without infrastructure or anything, we're able to talk that distance extremely well. And to have such a great relationship with the city is.
Yeah, well, I may not be the first one there, but I'm trying to admit it there.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Lee.
An addendum to that, Chavano Park has among its residents one of the improbably improbable few female extra-class hams on the planet. She's in the back of the room, my wife Catherine.
Thank you, Kathy. Did you want her to come up and get a hug at the dais?
No, that's later.
Later, okay. And item 5.3, proclamation. Public service recognition week. Chavano Park, it does not run without the public servants that are here. Chavano Park is dedicated to this, to our citizens, and without the staff that we have here, we could not provide the services that we have. We have police and fire that are their average response time is about three and a half minutes. I can tell you that is just an amazing response time when you consider San Antonio and all the traffic around here. Chavano Park, one of the first things I asked Bill when I became mayor was to let me know when people died. And you can't know when people become sick, but you can know after they've passed. In the last nine years, there have been twenty-three times that it's been reported that one of our citizens has passed. That wasn't in a nursing home, that wasn't at the hospital two hours after they had been transported, that didn't pass in a rehab facility or a nursing home after that. The fact that we have over four thousand citizens and we have only had twenty-three reported deaths among our citizen class is absolutely phenomenal, and that goes to our police and fire and EMS response times and the level of care that they provide. Also, we look out there and we look at the street improvements that are being made on the old side of the city of Chavano Park. The Public Works Department, the Water Department, the things that they have been able to do to save money for our citizens, absolutely phenomenal. And then who would even consider training, trading our most capable financial officer, city secretary, and assistant city manager? Absolutely, absolutely amazing. We appreciate each and every one of you, and let's give everybody a big round of applause. Item number six, consent agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do we have a motion to accept and or approve items 6.1 through 6.5?
So moved.
We have a motion from Maggie. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second from Buddy. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Thank you very much for showing up, Tom. Item number seven, city manager report. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Does anybody want to pull items 7.1 through 7.5? If there being no request, it brings us to item number eight, regular agenda items. Discussion, action, resolution, R 2024 008, canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the 2024 general election and 2024 special election. Bill? You want to give us the results?
Yeah, so in your packet, there is a summary sheet, there's the resolution, 24 008. The bottom line is we had a special exception for the Crime Control Prevention District and the votes. There were two hundred and eight votes, four and twenty-one against, so over a ninety percent approval rate of that, the election passed, proposition passed.
Okay, did we authorize that for five years or ten years? I believe it was ten years. We were able to this year go either for five, ten, or twenty. Previously, it had always been five, so I commend everybody for coming out and voting. It's very important that we get our citizens out. Ninety percent plus, almost ninety-one percent is a great turnout. Do we have a motion to approve resolution R 2024 008?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second? We have a second from Maggie. There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries five oh. Oath of office, newly elected officials. I am so happy that we have four new officials. I think somebody prayed about them earlier because they've been doing such a great job, and I'm going to ask all of them to come forward, the three of them to come forward and to take their official oaths. God, please join me.
Oh, yeah.
No biggie, no biggie.
Right there, it's great. Raise your right hands, please, and repeat after me, and you will insert your name or I pause. In the name of I, the authority of this state of Texas, I. Don't forget to repeat after me. I.
Aye.
Your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm. That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of Alderman of the City of Chavano Park.
Alderman of the City of Chavano Park.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability. Preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution. And laws of the United States. And of this state. So help me God. Thank you. Okay, y'all want to all stand here and Maggie, if I can get you to sign, and I will counter sign yours. You are. Maggie Kautz, right there.
What's that first signature for? A loan document?
Yes. Sign away your lives.
More years behind ours.
No, I will. And so do you, my alderman, you need to stay swayed.
What you doing there?
Congratulations.
I can take a chance and add a tour or something, says.
You feel like losing blood?
Serving does nothing. Administered your oath. Let's get in close like we might be killed. One, two, three.
Oh, we're immortal. Immortal.
Okay, Chavano, as well, let's get another one with Maggie and please get out of the way.
Oh.
Come on, I mean, with Lee and Kathy. Come on, Maggie, you're not in the picture, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
Item number 8.3, discussion, action, appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. Buddy?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Conrad Kirkendall as Mayor Pro Tem.
I have a second.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those all opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Congratulations.
Item number 8.4. Discussion, action, update on street phase one, street reconstruction projects. City engineer and Bill. Bill, do you want to start with it, or do you want to turn it over to Chris?
Hit the next slide. I told Curtis he'd give this update with Chris's support. So the slide's pretty self-explanatory, but go ahead.
Come on up, Curtis.
Sorry. All right, thank you, Mayor and Council. So a quick update on the street project where we're at. Everything in green there is road complete, and that doesn't necessarily mean we have a maintenance bond on it or that the punch list has been done on it, but it's more or less complete for the people driving on it. The rain today might delay it, but asphalt was scheduled for Wednesday for the phase one of Cliffside, which is desperately needed. It's been now, what, a month and a half with the delays with the rain and everything. Phase two of Cliffside, which is further up the bend there, the curving work, asphalt's planned on June 5th. Then I have the further dates, last phase of Cliffside scheduled for the 27th of May, Saddle Tree for June 19th, and then they show early October getting the cul-de-sacs. Just a quick wrap-up on the gas project. They had switched over some contractors. It delayed a little bit, but it is, they have told us, project will be completed by Wednesday. So that's good. That deconflicts it. Now, to get to the crux of why we put this on the agenda for tonight, I thought it'd be good before we launch into the proposed change order, where we're standing on the fund, bond funding. Right now, we have about five million dollars in unspent bond monies. Of that, three point one million is uncommitted. So on this table, you can see we have obligated contracts, then what we've actually spent, and then there's also this interest income, which is well over half a million dollars. So the remaining bond monies there at the bottom being added to the total that we haven't spent, a little over five million, but uncommitted to any contract is three point one five two. Of course, there is subject to arbitrage, which we might have to pay back to the feds on the interest income that has been received, and we had not expended, I think it's seventy-five percent over three years. So that gets proposed, our proposed change order. So we're proposing to extend the reconstruction of the street sections on the cul-de-sacs that are north here of City Hall. You got Hunter's Branch, Hunter's Branch South, Elm Spring, Honeybee, and Turkey Creek. And all of these areas, there was either pre-existing patches done, some crack ceiling, alligator cracking signs of a lot of pavement deterioration, or because of us going in and relocating water lines, we've also have ripped up the road on Honeybee extra a little bit and stuff like that. Because they're already working on the cul-de-sacs, they're already going to be in the area. It's not very disruptive to the residents generally to just extend out, and we think that we can accomplish this, patch up of these areas just beyond the cul-de-sac about a hundred feet on most of these, and it'd be a hundred and fifteen thousand, a little over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to accomplish that.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Curtis. One of the things you mentioned was the three-year arbitrage rule where we don't complete ninety percent of the, expending ninety percent of the funding within the three years. Are we going to be making ninety percent of the ten million dollars within the three years?
We are likely to spend that. We haven't brought to you any specific proposals for approval yet, but we did brief you on the phase kind of two, phase one, and I don't, I think it's phase one Bravo or Charlie of Chavano Creek, which is going to be to seal coat it and to extend the construction. So, once we sort out and get this done, get the federal project done, we'll be coming to you with that specific.
Okay, now, the federal project and the Chavano Creek projects are basically one project. Are we bidding them separately or are we bidding them?
No, they're two projects.
I mean, they're two projects. Are we bidding them separately, or we, or can we go out on the Chavano Creek project before we finish the federal funds project? Are the other portion of the federal funds project?
That depends. We can probably do anything we want. I don't know that it will make sense to do it because we're going to have to see how far we can extend the federal funds and where that goes, and then that will determine where we pick up on the other piece.
Okay. Okay, very good. Chris?
I didn't have anything to add. Curtis did a pretty good job summing it up. I mean, we're in the home stretch of this project. Things are going well. Weather hasn't been nice to us recently, which has slowed things down a little bit, but D and D's found their groove and things are moving pretty smoothly.
Okay, Pete?
So, Chris, typically when you get change orders like this, you look at the hundred and fifteen thousand and you ask yourself, is it reasonable? Is it a reasonable charge? And I know y'all probably done your due diligence on this. Could you expand on that a little bit for us?
Yeah, for the amount of work that we're adding, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is very reasonable. Generally, overall on the project, we're doing very well on change orders. I mean, to date, we're at one point three percent on change orders. This will take us to two point nine percent. Generally, anything less than five is considered really good. So, you know, we've, we're adding scope, and we're still less than five percent. I mean, this project's been going really well, and I think this change order is very appropriate.
Okay. Anybody else? Bill, do you have anything else that you'd like to add at this time?
No, we're just looking for the motion to approve the change order.
Okay, and as far as the completion date, do we have any kind of outside dates that are inside and outside dates that we're looking for?
Well, if they start, I think it'll be at the end of the summer. I mean, they've got a projected date out in October and stuff, but they should be done with the cul-de-sac before that.
Yeah, I would say substantial completion should be completed by end of summer, and then October would be final completion of all punch lists and everything.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the change order?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Pete and a second. Conrad? Do we have any discussion? There being no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Chris, thank you very much for being with us this evening.
I got one more.
Oh, okay, you're up on the next one, too. Good. Discussion, action. Parking options in the vicinity of City Hall. Bill, you want to start us out?
First slide. All right, Chris.
So somewhere around 2017, I think we put together this overflow parking on the Muni tract for the events such as Arbor Day that the city hosts. With this plan, we were able to achieve ninety-three parking, or ninety-three, fifty-three parking spaces, nine of those being compact. When we did this plan, the goal was to leave all trees. We didn't remove any trees, and this is the concept that gets laid out before every event. Fifty-three parking spaces isn't quite enough for the city, and so Bill asked us to look at some other options to increase the number of parking spaces that we can get across the Muni tract, what we're calling the Northwest Military Tract, and then also on Days of Vala. This is, we're calling option number two for the Muni tract. This one does require removing some trees. We try to leave the larger trees, over eighteen inches, and only remove smaller ones. We are able to achieve seventy-nine parking spaces. All of them are normal size. There's no compact spaces in this scenario. And with this, we would also place head-end parking on Days of Vala when we reconstruct that, which would add, just on this sheet view, twenty-three parking spaces on Days of which would add, just on this sheet view, 23 parking spaces on Days of Valla. There's additional spaces on Days of Valla, but I'll get to that here in a moment. This is option three. This is the total tree removal option. Trying to find a way to say that that didn't sound terrible, but there is no way. It is removing all of the trees within the parking area to maximize how many spaces we can get. With this, we do get 118 parking spaces, 26 of those are compact. But again, it is removal of all trees. If you're looking closely, you'll notice that it says 24 spaces on Days of Valla. It's the same number of spaces on Days of Valla. This viewport's just shifted slightly to the west. This is the rest of Days of Valla. So basically on Days of Valla, we looked at from the Culver Crossing that we're going to construct, all the way to the bus stop. So in the, in the previous, you do had 23 or 24 parking spaces. This slide represents an additional 55 to 56 parking spaces that we would get along Days of Valla. We did do angled parking so that the idea of people coming westbound on Days of Valla would turn in. We don't want people doing a U-turn to park. This is intended to be event-only parking. This is not full-time parking. Only during events would people be allowed to park here. The next option, or the next property that we looked at, is the property the city recently acquired over at Saddle Tree and Northwest Military. On the previous one, I went from minimal tree removal to maximum tree removal. I'm going the opposite direction this time. This is the maximum tree removal option. There are 102 parking spaces. It removes most of the trees within the property, but it does maintain a 20-foot landscape buffer on all sides. One thing I do want to point out on this option and all of the options for this property, the existing driveway on Northwest Military would be utilized to access this parking area. Next slide. This one, we try to maintain as many trees as we can. Some of the trees over 18 inches would be removed. And then, all of the smaller trees would be removed. It reduces the parking count to 88. They're all full-size, there's no compact parking. And again, we're going to utilize that same driveway. And then, this option is the least amount of tree removal. You can see that triangle close to Saddle Tree Road, that end street. We leave that entire triangle to maximize the number of trees that we can keep. This puts us at 90 parking spaces. And again, they're all full-size. There are a couple of larger trees. You can see on the north end, I wish I had a pointer.
I didn't bring mine at this time.
On the north end, you see that little circle with the 18 in it, and then the nine-foot dimension. There's one tree right there that's got to be removed. Right, that tree right there is one we would love to keep. But it, you just can't park the property without removing this tree.
I got it.
And then also this tree right here. So, we've maximized the number of trees we can save, but there are two casualties on trees larger than 18 inches with this plan. Was that the last one, I believe?
That's it.
So those are some options that we've come up with for the parking. And I guess what we're looking for from City Council is, do you like any of these options? Would you like to move forward with any one of them? Right now, these are just concepts. We have not looked at drainage, or how we would construct these. You know, do we leave them natural? Do we use pervious pavement? Do we use actual pavement? We haven't gotten to that stage on any of this yet. These are concepts of how could we park these, and the details are something we'll have to work out.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris.
Can we go back to the overflow parking? So, yeah, yeah, next, next. Okay. So, he said he would remove, this course of action removes all the trees in the parking area. But what it doesn't do is remove all the trees. I want to be clear on that. Because if you take a look to the west and into the north, extending all the way to the northeast, there's still quite a few trees.
Yeah, all of those would remain, yeah. If, just within the parking area is what I meant, if I wasn't clear on that.
Right, no, you were clear, but I just wanted to point out, I mean, you know, we really have a parking problem. And as much as we like to save trees, we actually have a lot of trees remaining still. And as Chris said, you know, we don't need a decision tonight, but we need us to be thinking about this. And what I wanted to do was get it in front of you before we start our budget workshops, and I would anticipate, you know, you might have some initial thoughts and questions now, but we're going to bring this back to workshops and through the budget process. We'll refine kind of a course of action to proceed forward. And, you know, there's really only a couple of decision points in each one of these. What's the extent of the footprint we want? And implied in that is removal of trees, number one. And number two is, what is the, what is the surface that we're eventually going to have to organize this and to market with? And I guess on the overflow parking and the Days of Valla, there's not really a question of how it affects residential properties. But on the lot across the street, I'll call that Lot A. Lot A across the street, you know, there is a neighbor there. Two neighbors there. One is we enter into the driveway, we can go to that one right there. One is we enter into the driveway in which whatever we did would be an improvement, and there will be some drainage concerns that will have to be addressed because the elevation of the Northwest Military Highway is higher at that point. It slopes down, and then you'll recall, the Lot B over to the south actually has a low spot. The water naturally pools there. And Texas did account for some of the drainage, but we'll have to work with that resident for sure in terms of that. And then to the east, we've got a 20-foot buffer there, but there is a property owner that is to the east at the top of that slide, which again, we'll have to work through. So unfortunately, in all of these options for that Lot A, you know, you're going to have a pretty significant parking footprint. And you might be able to see some trees in the middle of that, but the primary purpose of this will not be to make it aesthetically pleasing. Its primary purpose has to be parking, and then we need options then to mitigate it to make it, you know, aesthetically pleasing from that standpoint.
Okay. Bill, how many parking spaces are you recommending that we pursue?
I haven't pressed my brain into making that specific recommendation at this point. I'm just, you know, this is more, and we need to get to there, but this is more reporting out, here's what, here's what our engineers have done. We tried to give you a number of options. I think on Days of Valla, there's really only, there's, you know, we have the one option that's available.
Yeah, it's one option on Days of Valla.
Parking. Then there's three options on the other ones of which we can then flesh out as we move forward. And maybe with the attention on this now, we can look at the 4th of July event with a little bit more deliberate purpose of saying, okay, now that we have these options, what is the impact?
Okay. Pete?
So Chris, whenever there's a project like this, I always like to look at several things that I've turned about. Because I, this is a balancing act, right? The first one has to do with safety. Whatever parking lot we put in, I want to ensure that whatever residents come, that their safety is protected, that they don't have to cross major roads in order to get to the event, that it's easy for them to access the event. The second one would be the land uses. So you want to maximize your land use, whatever parking lot you pick as well. The trees, you want to save as many trees as you possibly can, or replant them somehow to stay neutral on the trees. Cost is another factor that comes into play, and the conformity with the surrounding area, right? So given all those, the five factors, of the recommendations that you have, the different options, from an engineering perspective, to balance those five perspectives, which would you recommend?
I really like the City Hall overflow option three. It does remove more trees, but it gives us more parking spaces on the Muni tract, which is where pedestrians are trying to go. And there's, there's less conflict with surrounding properties. I do recommend option three is one that we pursue in more detail. Days of Valla parking, to me, that's a no-brainer. We should absolutely do that. You know, we're redoing Days of Valla already. It just makes sense. But then option three on City Hall is one I would recommend. And then on the Northwest Military Saddle Tree, I actually like option three because it minimizes the number of trees that are lost. The differential from a parking count perspective is minimal. We go, with maximum tree removal, we're at 102. With minimal tree removal, we're at 90. So we're talking a delta of 12. To me, the trees are worth 12 parking spaces, especially if we can get, you know, all those parking spaces on the Muni tract. So that's my opinion.
Okay, Conrad?
Kind of staying on that subject, the, what's the differential on the municipal track parking from no trees to all trees, not all trees, but closer?
On the Muni tract, currently we have 53. Then the options are 79, 118, and 79, 118. So it's a pretty significant delta between the options.
When we come back to this, I guess it seems like there might be some more drainage involved, or not?
On the Muni tract, there definitely is some drainage to contend with. The good news is that it all goes through city property, and it's all going to the Culver Crossing that we're improving with Days of Valla.
I guess what I'm getting at, is there a difference in drainage cost from trees to no trees, basically?
It's going to cost a little bit more on drainage. I can't even say that. Drainage is probably about the same either way, because we're going to surface drain it. I don't see us putting in, you know, storm source systems or anything like that in this scenario. One thing to consider is we do have, we are in the recharge zone, so if we go with a paved surface, we will have to do a water pollution abatement plan. With TCQ, they, they don't have real good guidance when it comes to pervious pavement, or even leaving it natural. I have heard from them in the past that if you leave it natural, but you intend to park on it, you still need a WPAP. They could not point to anything in the regs to back that up. It's just, well, that's what we want. So if we, if we go that option, actually whatever we do, we definitely want to consider having a conversation with TCQ and, you know, flushing that out.
And then to tag with that, that WPAP, I think that's the regulation or entity that we have to deal with, for this, keep this Days of Valla permeable on the side, so it's an improvement, like we talked about before, without having to go before them.
So, on the Muni tract, it's been a few years since I've looked at this in detail. There is an approved WPAP on the Muni tract that does allow X percentage of impervious cover. I would have to go back and review that. I guess it's probably 2018 was the last time I looked at that in detail. But we did, I do remember we had some impervious cover credits remaining on the existing WPAP.
I'd ask that last time, I think, just to make sure we don't cost ourselves something, either time or money on that.
Thank you Conrad. Anyone else?
Yes.
Maggie?
Okay. I've been dealing with this now for several days, and trying not to be on one side or the other, but what's, what does the final design do for Chauvin Oak Park? It comes down to, I love trees, I love events, I love parking close, I like availability for our citizens to go, to come to. Now, going back, we have five events a year that this will, this will affect. Maybe more, but five events for sure that we want good attendance, availability. Now, do the, in the rest of the time of the year, we do without these trees, what does Tree City USA look like? Now, I think we need to get a balance. I mean, I'm not, I'm not liking this open space with no trees at all, because it's, we've denuded the look of our community.
Yeah.
Of Tree City USA. So, we have to keep in mind, we have to have a balance, I think Pete said, and Conrad said, and everybody said. It's got to be the balance. Maybe we can't be as gracious those five times during the year to get everybody on the ground, ground, but we do know a lot better before, but I don't know. We could still have to look at these trees.
Maggie, do you want to look at, so you're saying that you don't like option three? Do you want to look back at option two and see what that looks like?
Yeah, and I've done all kinds of different things, you know.
Option two, we take out the small oaks, is what we're doing.
That we take out the small ones, and we still have a fringe that gives us a softness. We don't want, in my mind, I'm seeing concrete, straight concrete, looking at Chauvin Oak, looking at City Hall, and that's ugly.
Yeah. And we've talked in the past about having a green solution, which would mean that we don't put down the impervious cover, we put down, you know, we prepare the soil, we put in, we plant it with grass, we put in little pavers, and the grass grows into the pavers. And then you can have the markers that tell you where the parking spaces are. And if you drive by it,
It gives us the softness.
Whenever, well, if you drive it by it after you hadn't mowed it for a couple of weeks, it looks like it's just a pasture in there. As opposed to, hey, now we're going to use it, and we cut it a little bit shorter so that you can see where the actual markers are.
Right.
Is that something that's okay with you, instead of using the concrete or the asphalt surfaces?
Yeah, I'm not liking the concrete visually, I mean, just now.
Okay.
I'd have to read, I'd have to look at it, but that doesn't do it for me.
Okay. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill, are we talking about doing this and that at the same time across the street?
What's this and that?
Days of Valla in this piece of dirt next to this building and across the street?
Well, I think we're going to have to be measured on it. We'll have to take a look at when and how we want to do it. I would say that the first priority is the easiest would be the Days of Valla. The Days of Valla will be done during the federal project. That's going to be a no-brainer, whenever that goes.
Absolutely.
The overflow, I think, ought to be the first priority, because then you can measure what you want. You know, the difference between option two and three is almost 40 spaces and very few different trees. I mean, you're taking a lot of trees out here in option two and in option three. There's only a few trees you save in option three. And I think we just need to be reminded how how significant the parking problem is. We have cars that are parking down Bike Way and down Elm Springs.
Yes.
And all the way past the municipal track, and they're walking a half a mile. And we've been able to actually use Northwest Military Highway to a degree. And when we lose that, that is going to be significant. Safety is the big issue for me. And I know trees are going to be an issue, but I think that we can mitigate that. And just like Northwest Military Highway, when those trees were being ripped out, and it was all ugly construction, it looked bad. It doesn't look as bad now when you've got green grass, and you still have trees on the outside of where they removed the trees in Northwest Military Highway. So, it's not something we have to decide tonight. I do also agree that a concrete solution is probably a bad solution.
Yeah, but I'm envisioning Walmart parking lot in the middle of the night.
No, no, no. I can't imagine that.
That, I cannot either. There's a compromise in there somewhere. Yes, the no-brainer, we're doing Days of Valla, move the curb to the right, put some stripes in there, absolute genius. Of course, there's the question about having a sidewalk and drainage, because Days of Valla is going to slope that direction for normal drainage anyway. I'm sure you're going to be able to figure that out without digging a trench.
When we did the latest HUD grant, we included language that said loosely, parking on Days of Valla. And if I am looking at this course of action for the overflow, that is parking on Days of Valla. So what I'm suggesting is that we will have federal funds to be able to do option overflow. Whether we do option one, two, or three, making it environmental friendly. Whether we do option one, two, or three, making it environmental friendly, we would have the funds available to, perhaps, and we'll have to work, work this closely. But to make it environmental friendly, so it not a concrete parking lot, and we can still maximize the parking.
So we're, we're in agreement that days of all are the no brainer. We're gonna do that with the head in. It's just right now, we're thinking about option A, B, or C, or some other one that might come up from the minds of the geniuses that do these things. I'm on, I'm on board with Mags about the concrete. There's gotta be something that's less cold, sterile, and looks like a parking lot of a trucking company. So we can work on this. But option three for out here, I'm not gonna be able to sell my neighbors because of the number of tree loss.
Okay, Buddy?
This might be a little premature, but with the parking lot A on Saddle Tree, are we gonna be allowed to put a crosswalk with lights at that point? Would, what's the, how, how's tech stock gonna affect it? Or what'd be the process of doing that? Are we gonna force people to, to walk to the corner?
Well, so I wouldn't envision putting, I haven't envisioned putting a crosswalk there. Because this is for special event parking only. I was imagining we'd probably have police officers that would direct traffic, you know, during those special events. If you, if you put in a pedestrian signal there, you can do a mid-block signal. Tech stock is not real supportive of them, but they can be done. That makes it more of a permanent thing, which encourages people to park there at random times. You kinda wanna keep it to, to special events.
It, it also encourages people that are at Saddle Tree to just cross anytime they want to to the municipal track, instead of right now being vetted all the way down to Northwest Military and then to come across and then come back, so. Okay, any, Pete?
So Chris, one of the things, looking at the design on the days of all's parking lot, was there any thought to giving an entrance and an exit? I mean, the, the way that you just have one combined entrance and exit. A lot of times I've seen these parking lots, there's, there's two entrances, one on either end. So any thought to that? And the second question I have, and when we lived in California, one of the things that we're doing a lot of parking lots downtown, the way they would soften them up is with a lot of, I don't know how to describe this, but intermittent kind of landscaping that they would do inside. Has there been any thought to that as well? Other, other than trees?
So we could add a, a, and I'm gonna call it an exit. You know, so you in, enter on the east side and exit on the west side. If we do that, you would lose five to six parking spaces. And there's not enough parking in here to really warrant that. And we can get by with one, especially when it's special event parking. For the surface of this, right now, one of the challenges we have is it's completely natural. And so every time there's a special event, Public Works has to go out there. They lay out the parking lot based on the design that we had provided. It's very man-hour intensive. One of the ideas that I like is, I call them egg crates. I don't, I can never remember the actual name of them. But they're, they're basically, they look like egg crates. They're about inch and a half to two inches tall. You lay them out on a, we have to compact grade, make sure, you know, everything's stable. But you lay them out, you fill them with topsoil or gravel. I'd recommend topsoil and then grass seed. And the grass seed grows in and you don't even know that's there. Go to UTSA by their engineering building, their fire lane is built out of that. You would never see it, you can't see it. One of the benefits of that is they have markers that you can place inside the cells of the egg crates. You can actually delineate the parking stalls. And then it's a permanent feature. You go out there, you mow it, you can see them. When the grass grows up, you don't even see them. Driving down the road, you would never see them. And so that, that's the option I like. I'm an engineer who plays landscape architect sometimes. So that, that's my idea of how, you know, I'd like to see this accomplished. But there are many other options that we, we can pursue. As far as putting like landscape islands throughout there, we could do that. Just with everyone, you lose another parking space.
Okay. Any other discussion, Maggie?
Just to rehash a thought in my own mind, because I want it all. That's my, my goal, I want it all.
Marissa, thank you very much.
Thank you. And the five days, the five events we have, they're usually three hours each, so for fifteen.
A little bit closer, Maggie, a little bit, little bit closer.
Really? Oh, it's echoing in my ears here, okay. For, so for fifteen hours a year, we're having, this, this is what we're faced with. You know, however we do that, I mean, we've got to look at it year round, plus the people. And maybe we don't sell the people on the lot. But it's sure a lot better than it is now.
Conrad?
Just a reminder, we have municipal court. We have municipal court, so.
Okay. Fifty hours.
Well, very good. I, I think that, Bill, we've left you with the quagmire. Chris, thank you for making that quagmire that much more enjoyable. We do appreciate it. Thank you very much for being here. Bill, any final?
None.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Brings us to eight point seven. I'm sorry, eight point six. Discussion Action Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Chavino Park and Rogers Chavino Park Unit eighteen nineteen concerning possible development of the property for economic development purposes. Bill?
The city, loosely, the city leaders, myself and Mayor Warner, have been talking to Laddie about billboards for years. Previous city managers prior to me, et cetera. Previous agreements and master developments. When we had a whole bunch of billboards on, on sixteen oh four and then what that would look like. But here recently, we've been talking about the possible development of certain properties, three of them potentially, in which an arrangement would be made. And there's several ways to make an arrangement in which we could get electronic billboards and then still get economic revenues from that. Ultimately, we have sorted out a course of action in which we would potentially lease property from the Rogers Chavino Ranch, Unit nineteen, represented by Bitter Blue. And then go out for bid for a sign company to install signs and then to advertise on that. And then we would sublease that property that we leased from the Rogers family. And then the arrangement would be made that we would split the revenues. So as, as that discussion has morphed, we've gotten into more and more details. And we actually have drafts that have been produced and that are being socialized between the parties. So one of the preliminary documents that would need to be agreed upon is this memorandum of understanding, which talks about how the process that we've been working through and we're very close on getting agreement to will actually take place. And that's this memorandum of understanding. And it's about a ten-page document. And it lays out a timeline that says we're going to have a lease agreement that's, that's been drafted up. We're gonna have a request for proposal for signage. And then we'll have a sublease that will be looked at. And that the party of, of the Rogers Chavino Ranch, Unit nineteen, will get an opportunity to look at all those. And while, and they can provide input. I mean, obviously, they're gonna approve and disapprove of the lease between us and them. They'll have input on the sublease. But, and they may have input on the request for proposal. They wouldn't be in the decision-making cycle of the actual request for proposal, uh, request for proposal and the selection of the sign company. But they will be informed of that. That's essentially what that document says. The document we shared with Bitter Blue and their attorneys, we got some feedback. And the good news is, for the most part, the, the mechanism and the process that have, has been established and talks, they have not objected to in this memorandum of understanding. As I pass to each one of you individually, there's two key points of which there's, there's some negotiations that's going to have to occur. The first one was that the initial draft that you have in your packet is a binding memorandum of understanding, which the parties would sign and we'd be bound by those agreement terms. And then in their, their comeback to us, they wanted to make it a non-binding. They, they, they have suggested making it a non-binding agreement. Well, in reality, you could probably, we could probably live with a non-binding agreement if the actual terms of the lease was executed in a timely manner that wouldn't affect the request for proposal, the selection, and the subleases associated with that. Because at that point in time, once we leased the property, we're bound by that lease. And so that, that leased, that leasing agreement is probably good enough. That's still negotiable. The other point that the, the Rogers party, represented by their attorney, came back, we had a proposed date, a target date of fifteen June to sign the lease between the Rogers family and the city. That's a pretty tight timeline. You know, that could slip, it's not critical. There's no magic time of fifteen June, other than we were, we're trying to get closure on this and move forward. That timeline was selected purposely because that was during, you know, the binding memorandum of agreement was still in effect. The RFP would have been released. But we wouldn't have received the proposals nor selected, the proposal had, would not have been selected. They wanna change it to where they slipped that till after the sign company would have been selected. So we, we have an issue with that. And the attorney and Mayor Warner and I talked about that briefly. We kinda talked about what, hey, what? Anyway, I sent Laddie a note saying, okay, I see the two major issues are that you went from a binding to a non-binding and you moved the lease signature, the leasing of the property till after the signing company selected. That is not gonna work. Because there's nothing binding to this. We don't wanna go out for a request for proposal without even having this locked in. They could just walk away from the deal at any given point. And then where are we in terms of obligation? We could write the request for proposal that says we don't have to select anyone. But still, that complicates things greatly. I sent to Laddie that note sometime Friday. The only thing I'll say is he acknowledged all that, agrees with it. And we have to send him the, the drafts, which we have talked to Allison about. They should be ready to be sent tomorrow. And to his attorneys, our attorney to their attorney. And then therefore, I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to execute this memorandum of understanding with the city's interest protected. So you've seen a copy of, I've talked to most of you about it. What this motion is asking for is approval of the memorandum of understanding and authorize the city manager to sign the memorandum should minor amendments be made by the Chavino, Chavino, the Rogers Chavino Ranch, as long as those minor agreements were made in consultation with the city attorney and the mayor. Mayor representing city council, but the city attorney giving us that advice. And so even though we're not a hundred percent agreement with Bitter Blue and, and the Rogers, we're in practical agreement with that, with them. And there is some timeline in this, because the next scheduled meeting is, is is late June. Now, we could call a special meeting at any given time if we needed to. But I'm suggesting that the framework of the memorandum of understanding is solid enough based upon our terms, our attorney wrote it, that, that should, it should be solid enough to approve it subject to minor changes, subject to the, the city attorney.
Okay. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the draft memorandum of understanding between the City of Chavino Park and Rogers Chavino Park Unit eighteen nineteen concerning possible development of property for economic development purposes and authorize the city manager to sign the MOU should minor amendments be made by Chavino Ranch in coordination with the mayor and the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Pete. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Conrad. We're now open for discussion. Lee?
I'm gonna go back to this binding and non-binding. Mr. Mayor, what are your thoughts on the applicability of binding versus non-binding protecting the city?
Well, we either need to have a binding MOU or we need to have a signed lease agreement.
Okay.
Because, because the idea is, one of them is a promise ring.
Yep.
And the other one's an engagement ring, a wedding ring. And so we gotta have one or the other.
Okay, we're on the same page.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? There being, Pete?
All right, so mine has to do with liability. And this, this could be a question to either you, Mayor, or Bill, because y'all have both been talking.
And the city attorney is on call. I can, we can call her if we need to.
So the, the question really gets into, we're entering into a leasing, lease or arrangement? Right?
Correct.
And there's liabilities on both sides of, of that?
Yes.
Right, so there's leasing responsibilities, there's lease or responsibilities?
Yes.
Have y'all gone through all that and has all that been ironed out?
Yes, our, our primary responsibility is give them half of all the money that we get.
Well, yes, we, we have addressed that to a large degree. Because obviously, the Rogers family is trying to minimize their, their risk. We're trying to minimize ours and we're trying to push as much as we can to the sublease. So those specific documents will have to bring back to you to city council for approval. So that's, you know, so that is not, we're not asking for approval of that.
Yeah. You know, the RFP is gonna come in. And that's going to include the ultimate sublease agreement to the third party. And the only people that can approve that will be city council. So y'all get the final bite at the apple.
With the understanding that where we are in this situation, between the three parties, we're the buffer and we bear vulnerability in both directions. So which is why I'm glad that you said what you said.
Yeah.
So, so the reason, the context that I'm asking this in is typically, you've, we've been discussing this for a long time. And typically, what happens is when you get to RFQs and you get ready to sign the agreement, it all comes down to liability is, or typically the things that I've seen that hold up a contract. So my, my question really has to do with the context of, have you worked through the liability issues? And it sounds like that you have discussed those and at least have some alignment on the liability issues.
Yeah, we're.
Is that a first statement?
We're, we're laying off all the liabilities that are possible, I believe, to the third party that will eventually take the signs. And, and the signs become fixtures with the property. And then what happens when you leave is we would, we're looking to have an option to either keep your sign because your term has expired or because you violated your term, or to require them to take it off. The, the ultimate liability is they don't have the money to take it off, nobody else wants to rent the property. And sometime in the future, city council could be caught with, hey, we've got a sign up here. We now have to pay somebody to use their rector site to take it back down, to take it to the surface that it had been. But that's not the gigantic exposure because those signs cost money and people wanna keep those signs.
So can you tell me again on ownership? Who owns the sign? Would it be Bitter Blue or would it?
During, during the term of the lease.
The term of the lease, right.
Well, the, the term of the lease that we're discussing is a ninety-nine-year ground lease. For business transaction purposes, a lease of, it's either thirty, thirty-two, or thirty-five years, you're considered to be the owner of the property. So we're kinda considered to be the owner of the property. We, the City of Chavino Park. So that means that that sign is actually our property, just like this building is our property. Which is actually the position you wanna be in, because you control the property. But you lay off the exposure on the property. And, you know, the, the way that I would look at this is, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. So I, I don't mean to open this up for discussion. I, I just wanted to make sure that, that some thought has been given to this issue. And it sounds like you guys have, y'all, y'all worked through the liability issues, which is, to me, is a really critical piece, because that, that, they'll hang you up every time.
Yep. Okay. Other questions, comments? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the draft memorandum of understanding between the City of Chavino Park and Rogers Ranch. the draft memorandum of understanding between the City of Chavano Park and Rogers Ranch, Rogers Chavano Park, Unit 1819, concerning possible development of the property for economic development purposes and authorize the city manager to sign the MOU should prior minor amendments be made by the Rogers Chavano Ranch in coordination with the mayor and the city attorney. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The motion carries 5-0. 8.7, discussion action proposed plan to review and possibly recommend amendments to selected topics. City of Chavano Park Code of Ordinances. Curtis, I think you're
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is action before you comes from the 23 Town Plan, which is a defined action step to establish a periodic ordinance review program. So in February, we started this process by trying to identify areas most needed reviews, sort of a prioritization. We sought input from the police chief, code enforcement officer, especially parts of the ordinance if they had difficulty understanding or enforcing. Sorry. So this is your summary sheet. So here's, not in any particular order that we want to tackle these, but these are the things that the police chief and us working attorney, we thought were areas that could be reviewed. They hadn't been reviewed in a long time, and they're out of date, or they're difficult to enforce, difficult to understand. I'll just run through them. So the noise ordinance, which is Chapter 20, Article 3 of the code, and right now, we don't not have clear set decibel levels. Many police departments, many cities, cities, Antoni, around us, they have clear set decibel levels. You can have an app on your phone. You can get a clear decibel level. We don't have those specifics. It was last reviewed in 2011, so it's been over decades since you reviewed that. And lighting ordinance, Chapter 14, again, reviewed the entire ordinance, especially when it comes to foot candles and lumen references. Are they still applicable? Are these up to date? Is it the modern tools that our code enforcement officer uses to measure these from the property line? And again, it has been reviewed since 2009. RV screening in Chapter 36, we don't have any definitions for what street view and view is in relation to what an acceptable RV screening is. So just defining those terms, again, is a really small change, but it could have a lot of impact on how it's enforced. And animal ordinance, Chapter 4, review the entire ordinance. We just went through that in 2023, if you recall, the dangerous dogs. But to more look at it holistically, you know, everything from chickens, goats, it's very broad. There's not been, majority of that has not been reviewed or changed in a very long time.
Yeah, large animals are not defined. So it's not like we're going to ban chickens, but we don't want to go there.
So authority to impound. So we have no current ordinance. From my understanding, if you have more questions, this year, I have to talk with the chief. But my understanding, there's a state law that empowers our police department to impound vehicles for certain violations. But we do not have anything on the books that reflects or enhances that transportation code with that power. And the specific example the police chief gave to us was driving without insurance. The local law has to, the state law does not authorize a police officer to impound a vehicle for that, from my understanding. And then finally, surface parking, Chapter 32, define what all-weather surface. That's a term in our ordinance, that parking, the car has to be parked on all-weather surface, but there's no definition for that. Difficult to enforce, and it hasn't been reviewed since 2009. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you very much, Curtis. Bill, on these items, are you just kind of looking for consensus that yes, we suggest that the city staff and planning and zoning go forward in reviewing these particular items?
Yeah. I mean, not all of these are planning and zoning. You know, like the noise ordinance, I don't think needs to go to the planning and zoning. If you want it to go to the planning and zoning, we can take it to the planning and zoning.
Okay. It did come out of planning and zoning, by the way.
It may have, but it's not a planning and zoning ordinance. But the lighting ordinance, that's probably the most egregious. Our standards are so lenient, we can't enforce anything. And I, just looking at some of the other cities, we can do better than we can and still not, and still not violate homeowners' rights to, you know, to a certain degree. I mean, we have some situations in here where lighting is just unbelievably grievous, and we can't do anything about it. And it really disrupts the neighborhoods around and the residents. So we could, and we're supposed to have a dark skies ordinance, which we do because it points down, but the amount of foot candles that is allowed is excessive. We can do a lot better than that. If you want city, you know, the planning's only do, the RV screening, P&amp;Z for sure. None of the other ones really need P&amp;Z, but we're happy to take it there if that's what you direct, however you want to do it. I'm just giving you a heads up that, hey, we got, we got some areas that we've been talking to the attorney about. We've been internally talking about it for some time. We're not going to do them all at once. We're going to probably do them one at a time, and then we'll bring them forward. If there's any significant concerns or any, you know, don't go there, or let's have somebody else look at it. P&amp;Z, we're fine with that. Just want to get it in front of the council for your awareness.
Yeah. My only comment would be that on the animals at homes, I'd like to read that ordinance before you bring it to city council, to be quite honest. Lee, you had a question?
Yeah, just a general comment.
Which one?
I think from a process standpoint, this is a really good idea to review your ordinances and identify those that need to update. So I'm with you 100%. I really don't care who does it, just as long as the work gets done. The other thing, I would, has there been any consideration to keeping a register? Do we keep a register when there's issues that we go through on the ordinances, and we see things that are kind of out of bounds? So we have a kind of a running register?
The code compliance and the chief has instituted this, a great tracking record on this stuff, yeah. Whether or not it's sortable, that I can give you clear, you know, here's all the history behind all that, I don't know. But in the last two years, we have got a great tracking record that the code compliance and the permitting and the chief can see, and they can do all that. We don't have a lot of noise, we have a lot of noise complaints, and most of them are resolved right on the spot. But we can be a little bit clearer on how we want to do that. That's not a major tweak. I think the major tweaks would be the lighting ordinance. Surface, all-surface parking, that would help us clarify, if you throw an inch of gravel down, does that all-surface? Maybe we need to consider a little bit more deliberately how we want to do that, so that people don't throw gravel on their backyard and put all kinds of in-op vehicles back there, you know. The authority to impound, we have those authorities. We're not looking at greater, significantly greater authorities, but we want to clarify that the city ratifies those authorities that we currently have. We want to make sure it makes sense. So animal ordinance, you know, I've had on my bulletin board, large animal ordinance definition for eight years, and we haven't done anything with it. And I can't remember exactly what it was, but it has something to do with, what's a large animal? Is it a goat, you know?
Mule.
Doesn't include goats.
Yeah. Whatever. I mean, there's something that needs to be clarified.
And I don't think it includes pigs. I think it's horses and cows.
Mules.
And mules.
That's why we need to look at it, because it's unclear. It's unclear.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, so the consensus is to, the city staff will go forward. Okay. The consensus is, Bill. Item number 8.8, discussion, update on town plan format, four-person work group and resident feedback prior to upcoming budget development process. Bill?
Okay. Well, the good news is that we scheduled this feedback, you know, a month, month and a half out. So we didn't have to, like, scramble and get emergency attendance and all that stuff going on. It's moving along fine. I've sent, basically, I have, you know, the guidance was five groups of five, about 25 people, to give some more intimate feedback based upon some discussions that those groups would have. And we fleshed out the idea, I briefed you a couple of times, that we're going to have a survey that goes out, and we're going to ask a number of residents to rank order the action steps, and that's going to give us some data. And we're going to look at those action steps, and we're going to put them in four quadrants, which basically say, you know, low cost, low impact, low cost, high impact, high cost, low impact, high cost, high impact. And so we'll have a, it won't be scientific. It'll be just kind of ballpark figure. And then based upon that, we'll look and see what the residents are saying in the survey. And we'll let those groups sit there and talk about it. With the idea that, at the end of the day, we want to know, well, what's important and what's not important, and did we miss anything? And so we, with some input from city council, because some of you have given me some input on who to invite at these meetings, I've essentially, currently, right now, invited approximately 29 folks to be present at a three-hour session in Pisano's on the 3rd of June. I'm anticipating a number of those folks will not be able to make it, because just the percentage of people that have other activities and out of town is going to be something. So I've got a backup list, but the target is to get 20, you know, five groups of five. Right now, I've only had RSVP of 10 of the 28. You know, not everybody can actually RSVP to a calendar outlook invite. So I'm going to have to call some folks, and we'll have to work through all that. We did release the survey last week. It went out to 51 folks. Basically, what we did was we took everyone on the P&amp;Z, everyone on the tree committee, everyone on the board of adjustments, everyone on the investment committee, everyone on the water committee, and then other individuals, 11 other individuals. So all your committee members are participating in the survey, invited to participate, 11 other people. And those 11 people, you'll almost all recognize, they've been on committees before, or they were active in the town plan. So Curtis was monitoring the survey results. I'm going to ask him to give us the number again, because he sent me an update this morning, and I've already forgotten how many actually people responded out of the 51. What was it?
17 people have responded.
17 people. And we'll keep pushing that noodle as we go. But I'm confident we'll get survey input. What that tells us, I'm not sure, but we'll have that put in a quadrant so that we can kind of understand where we want to prioritize it. Because in theory, low cost, high impact are really good things. And as I've already briefed you, a lot of this stuff, we're already doing. Even like parking, we're already considering parking options, right? We're considering economic development agreements with Bitter Blue to pull in more revenue. We're working with Bitter Blue on the future development of that 22-acre site and other things. So all this is ongoing, and this is just going to allow us, before we, as we go into the budget workshop, to take a look at what are our opportunities and where we want to put greater emphasis. So that's my report.
Thank you, Bill. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Bill? Pete?
Just a comment. Bill, I've heard from a few people, and they're actually excited about this thing. So I think it's good. I think if nothing else, it creates engagement with the community.
Thank you, Pete. Item 8.9, annual budget calendar. Brenda?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff has drafted the fiscal year 25 budget calendar, which allows council and staff to arrange their schedules for the required meetings over the next several months. Please consider the proposed schedule and provide guidance as to modifications. Tonight, staff is requesting council confirmation of the dates and times for the first two budget workshops, currently planned for Wednesday, May 29th at 12 noon, and Wednesday, June 19th at 12 noon. So the city manager is anticipating taking annual leave from June 4th to the 7th, and will be unavailable during that time. Prior to the first workshop, staff will present to council each department's draft goals and objectives. Some will be service-related, and some will be resource-related. Staff will plan to fully fund those objectives that have been identified as critical. Funding of the other objectives will be based on staff's ability to operate within the projected revenues. Therefore, certain non-critical objectives may be deferred for future years. The calendar provides for council establishing overarching goals and objectives, as has been done in the past. Typically, the eight goals established in, I'm sorry, prior years do not vary significantly, but objectives do change as priorities and requirements evolve and objectives are accomplished. This is an important element of guidance provided to staff for the entire year, but also considering those objectives that require resourcing must be included in the budget. So note that staff intends to present the budget as early as possible. Considering the certified tax rolls are not provided to the city until approximately July 25th. Last year, the certified rolls were provided by BCAD on the July 24th. And the no new revenue, voter approval, and de minimis tax rates are not provided by the tax assessor collector's office until after that, usually several days. Presenting the record, city manager budget will be scheduled for August 8th at this time. So staff anticipates the requirement to approve the budget and tax rate at the normally scheduled city council meeting on September 16th. Remember, we're moving that earlier during that month. And will meet the timetable from the Bear County Tax Assessor Collector's Office for timely preparation and mailing of the tax bills on October 1. So this schedule anticipates a special city council meeting on September 9th for the first reading of the budget with the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you very much, Brenda. The change for the two workshops that are proposed is that instead of meeting at 5:00 in the evening, the proposal is to meet at 12:00 noon. Buddy, you and Conrad are kind of still in the regular workforce, which historically, we have not, we've pushed the 5:00 to get people to come home early, instead of to take, to force them to take two and a half to three hours out in the middle of the day, and then try to catch that at the end of the day. Is noon going to be an inconvenience? Would you like to go back to what we have traditionally done?
I mean, I can make it work at that time, but I'm saying that now.
Conrad, would you rather do the 5:00?
No, noon sounds good to me. Two, three hours.
We'll probably do two, two-and-a-half hour sessions. Okay? I didn't ask those of us who were not employed, except I am employed, but, Lee, does that work with you and Kathy?
It's all good.
Okay. Okay. So Bill, we have, you've actually asked us to accept this. I think you can just schedule it by consensus as well.
Okay.
So schedule those by consensus.
We'll send out a calendar invite. If there's something that emerges, we'll react as needed. And I don't, I'm hoping it won't be two hours.
Okay. 8.10 has been pulled from the agenda. Brenda, thank you very much. This brings us to item number nine. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion from Lee, a second from Maggie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries.